I call this meeting of the Upsher County Commission to order. We'll begin our meeting with a moment of silent meditation and prayer, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. It was an empty chamber a few minutes ago, and now it's full. It's always good to see people participate in the environmental process. And we have today a new face in the group. Megan, would you take the honors, please?
Sure, this is Carrie Wallace, our new Assistant Minister. She's in her first week.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Look forward to your contribution to the commission and working with you. Okay. For those of you present, I'm a little foggy right now, not because of medication, just because of a bad head cold or whatever it is we were discussing earlier. We'll progress. Take my glasses off. Jackie, you can give the minutes if you would please to last meeting.
Good morning.
Good morning, Jackie.
The County Commission of Upsher County, West Virginia, held a regular meeting at the courthouse amendments on Thursday, February 27, 2014, at 9:00 a.m. J.C. Rafferty called the meeting to order. They were present J.C. Rafferty, Commissioner, Donnie Tenny, Commissioner, Troy Brady, Commissioner, Megan Pomeroy, County Administrator, Javelin Thinkwalter, Secretary. Meeting began with a moment of silent meditation and prayer, followed by the pledge of allegiance. All motions passed unanimously unless otherwise stated. After reading of the minutes on motion by Donnie Tenny, second by Troy Brady, the Commission approved the regular meeting amendments of February 20, 2014, as submitted. After discussion on motion by Donnie Tenny, second by Troy Brady, the Commission approved the amendments of the 2014 Board of Review and Equalization as submitted. Earl Smith, Solid Waste Authority Director and Calis Sams, West Virginia Department of Environmental Protection, REEP District Environmental Coordinator, appeared before the Commission and provided an update slash status report concerning the local programs associated with the April 26, 2014 statewide spring clean update. Mr. Smith and Ms. Sams provided the annual materials and encouraged county residents to participate and adopt a spot, adopt a highway, and make it shine with promotions. Mr. Smith advised that an informational meeting will take place at the Buchanan Upsher Middle School on Thursday, March 13 at 6:30 p.m. J.C. Rafferty provided a review of the request from Steve Linger, Director, E-911 Communications Center, for the employment of Kami Al Dalton as full-time dispatcher. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, second by Donnie Tenny, the Commission approved Mr. Linger's recommendation. Effective date of employment is March 3, 2014, at the rate of $10 per hour. J.C. Rafferty provided a review of the request from Dr. Joseph Reed, Medical Director of the Buchanan Upsher Board of Health, for a letter of support for a campus-wide clean air policy at the New National Guard Armory and Convention Center of Rushing Fork Road, as outlined at the February 20 Commission meeting. After discussion on motion by Donnie Tenny, second by J.C. Rafferty, the Commission approved the request. J.C. Rafferty requested Megan Pomeroy to follow up with drafting the letter. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, second by Donnie Tenny, the Commission approved Whitney Orsborn as volunteer for the Lewis Substramal Control Facility. J.C. Rafferty reviewed the following information for your information items. Number one, request for donation for auction, Buchanan Upsher High School event. After discussion on motion by Donnie Tenny, second by Troy Brady, the Commission approved a donation of 10 day passes to the Buchanan Upsher Recreation Park School. Upsher County Public Utility Values, fiscal year 2014-2015, fifty million two hundred ninety-one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. Number three, correspondence from Senator Joe Manchin, Free, concerning Homeowner Flight Insurance and Affordability Act. Number four, Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy, Priority Listings Update, Region Seven Planning Development Council. Number five, correspondence from the West Virginia Development Office concerning the Village Community Participation Grant Award, Disabled American Veterans Chapter 36, Project Number 13, L-E-D-A, 0713, in the amount of eight thousand dollars. Number six, invitation to the Records Management and Preservation Award Ceremony, from the West Virginia Division of Culture and History. Number seven, Upsher County Sheriff's Financial Statement, January 2014. Number eight, agendas and/or notices of meetings as listed. Number nine, meeting minutes and/or financial reports as listed. Number 10, Upsher County Budget Hearings as listed, 11 meetings as listed. Twelve appointments needed or upcoming as listed. Rodney Rawson, Home Confinement Supervisor, appeared before the Commission, provided a review of the 2013 Upsher County Home Confinement Year End Report. Mr. Rawson reviewed a request for the leasing of electronic monitoring equipment. The proposal is for an upgrade to the contract already in place with 3M Electronic Monitoring Incorporated. The upgrade would allow for an increased level of control and supervision of home confinement fines through the use of real-time GPS monitoring. The fee is an increase to $3.20 per unit per day from the current fee of $1.50 per unit. However, the fee is only charged when the unit is in use. Mr. Rawson feels that advantages of the upgrade should result in increased referrals and a potential for substantial savings in regional jail fees for the county. After discussion on motion by Donnie Tenny, second by Troy Brady, the Commission approved the President to sign the contract ad hoc. In addition, Mr. Rawson advised that he has requested Judge Kurt Hall to increase the home confinement fee, which is paid by the client, to be raised to $15 per day from the current $10 per day. The Commission recessed at 10:00 a.m. The Commission recessed at 15:00 a.m. Michael Harris, Day Report Senate Director, appeared before the Commission and advised that due to recent changes to the Commandment Corrections Board, new appointments are needed. Ms. Harris recommended Erica Morris as Substance Abuse Treatment Advisor and Sydney Phillips Citizen-at-Large. After discussion on motion by Donnie Tenny, second by Troy Brady, the Commission approved the appointments as recommended. Ms. Harris provided a review of fiscal year 2014, it's supposed to be 2015, West Virginia Commandment Corrections Grant Program application in the amount of $247,140. After discussion on motion by Donnie Tenny, second by Troy Brady, the Commission approved and authorized the President to sign the application and all related documents. Alex Bennett, Upsher County Youth Baseball Association Representative, appeared before the Commission and provided a status report on youth baseball activity in the county. Mr. Bennett advised that the county is losing players to other counties due to not having training and game facilities nearby. Mr. Bennett requested assistance in finding funding resources. J.C. Rafferty advised of following up with the Region Seven Planning and Development Council and to perhaps attend the next meeting of the Buchanan Upsher Recreational Park Advisory Board to discuss available resources. Megan Pomeroy advised that she will follow up with checking for grants, which may be Members of the Upsher County Board of Education appeared before the Commission to certify the special school of the election results as follows. 1,786 yes votes and 1,347 no votes. On motion by Pat Long, second by Alan Suter, School Board members, the Board approved the election results and approved and authorized the following Board of Campusers to sign the canvassing Board's certificate of votes cast at the special school of the election. Terry Jo Samples, Alan Suter, Patrick Long, Troy Brady, J.C. Rafferty, Donnie Tenny, and Deputy Thatcher Wilford. The Commission approved all invoices for payment. The Commission approved all vacation orders. The Commission approved the following settlements as follows, as listed. The Commission approved the following exonerations and/or refunds, as listed. With no further business, on motion by Troy Brady, second by Donnie Tenny, the Commission meeting adjourned at 12:00 p.m.
Thank you, Jackie. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes as read? If not, is our motion approved, friends?
Second.
Excuse me. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Approved. Motion carries. First item on the agenda at 9:15, which the clock reflects it is 9:15. We have Connie Cutright, Upsher County Corporal Parish, request for funding. Please take the podium.
I will. She's passionate. I just set up the appointment.
Okay. If you could identify yourself.
I will.
People know who you are, but they'll be viewing public in the press.
Good morning. I'm Alicia Rocking. I'm the Director of the Upsher Parish House and Crosslines Incorporated. And I'm here actually on behalf of Crosslines Incorporated today for our annual appearance. We've gotten used to coming before you in March and just sharing a little bit of what we have done in the past year. I want to begin by again expressing our gratitude to the Commission, to the County Commission, for your support. What we do, we do because people are generous, and you folks have been generous in what you have done for us in the past years. And we appreciate that. Because Crosslines is housed in the parish house, everything that comes to Crosslines goes back out to the people of Upsher County. And so any amount of donation financially that we receive, we use in the course of the year. So I have before you some statistics that we have put together for you in comparison over the last several years. I ask you to look particularly at last year's statistics. Last year, we had a total assist of 11,207 assists. Now, that means it could be food packages, it could be utility emergency assistance, it could be deposits for rent, it could be any of those things. So we had 11,207 assists over the past year. As you can see, that's almost, that's a lot. In food packages, this is emergency food, we had 3,056, and that's an increase over Clothing vouchers are vouchers that we give folks who come in to go down to our clothing closet to pick out outfits for their families. And you can see that we had an increase in clothing vouchers as well. The clothes closet sells quite a few items, but we probably give 50 to two-thirds percentage away as well as what we sell. So there's a lot of clothing and essential items that go through that place, and we are able to help at least 3,000 times in this past year. Or 6,000 times in this past year. In this past year, we added 272 new households. Now, if you look back to 2012, in 2012, we added 323 new households. So over the past two years, we've added almost 600 new households to our database. And in a county our size, that's a significant amount of people who are in need of help. You can see that we stayed about the same with utility assistance over last year, but we pretty much have given out everything that has come in. If we don't have it, we can't give it. So that represents the amount that we've been able to pay through our donations. The startling statistic for me is always the transient homeless statistic. And you can see that it increased over 2012. Now, what we qualify as transient homeless folks are folks who suddenly find themselves homeless through a victim's or just folks who are kicked out of their homes. And some of these folks are, we see over and over in the course of the year. The definition of homelessness includes chronic homelessness three times in a year. This is the statistic that concerns me most because our policy generally is that when somebody comes to us and says, "I'm homeless," that we can give them at best three nights in a hotel and some resources where they can go to see if they can find other resources. And then after that, we can't help them anymore. And that's becoming painful for me. This past week, we had a woman that came to us who had left her home under domestic violence situation. And we tried to work with all the available resources, but the only thing we could give her was three nights. And at the end of three nights, she still hadn't found anywhere else to live. Sometimes we make an exception, but this is becoming more and more something that we deal with on a weekly basis. So I just want to put this out there that we do have a problem with folks who find themselves in homeless situations, and we don't have the resources to take care of them. So I would ask that you be open to thinking about that and thinking about what we can do to help these folks. You can see that our housing cost, and this is for rent and assistance, you can see that that has stayed about the same. Another startling statistic for me was that we spent about $10,000 more last year for food, for our food pantry. Now, we have a generous community, so this doesn't represent the financial figure that we have given out in food, because we do have such a generous community. But in addition to all the donations that we received and all the food drops that we benefited from, we still spent $27,000 to be able to help feed people on emergency basis. So that's pretty significant.
Quite an increase from the previous year as well.
Yes. So you can see that the cash payout for this year is almost $123,000. And so that's money that's going back into this community to help those folks who find themselves in desperate situations. We hear stories over and over again. We see some of the same people every year. Some of these folks who are hardworking folks who work all their lives at minimum wage jobs and Social Security just doesn't cover it. They're hardworking individuals, they still do what they can to make ends meet, but they just can't. And of course, some of the folks that we have are folks who, through disabilities, are not able to make ends meet as well. I would encourage you, as I do every year, because we have meals on Monday and Fridays, I would encourage you to come on Monday or one Friday and just over at the table with some of our neighbors and ask them what they do and how they're doing and what's happened to them in the last year. It's always eye-opening for me when I do that. So I would encourage you to come down on Monday or one Friday and have lunch with us and meet some of the folks that we help. So that's a few statistics about what we have done over the past year. Oh, on down, you will also see that an increase in our holiday giving as well. This year, we gave out over 1,200 holiday meal baskets between Thanksgiving and Christmas. We served around 400 meals on Christmas Day, and then at our Monday and Friday lunches, we averaged 30 to 40 people. One other thing that we have done this year is that we have increased our hours of operation. Previously, we'd open Monday through Thursday from 9:00 to 1:00, now we have added Friday. And those hours represent a lot of volunteer hours because the folks who man our help desk and work in our food pantry are all volunteers. So those are a little bit of statistics about what we've done in the past year, and I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have.
It is great, obviously.
It is.
The assistance that you provide is immeasurable to the community. It really is. Gentlemen, any comments?
Well, I know there, you see the people that are, as you mentioned, a lot of them are trying, they're just trying to survive. You know, and a lot of us, we live in excess compared to a lot of people who don't have. And I think it's a good thing that you all are doing, and I think it points to, and there's a lot of churches that have food pantries also that work. I know at Horizon's where I go, there's a food pantry, and there's a number of people that come. And so there are needs out there. And, you know, we're admonished as Christians, what Christ said, you know, "I was hungry and you fed me, and I was making you clothe me." And I think we're accountable to help those that, and I know there's a lot of people out there that work the system, and I'm pretty sure you all have safeguards in place that doesn't allow those people, so that money can be used for those that have needs, legitimate needs.
Well, let me just give you an example of our criteria we have in place. We can help with a utility assistant basically twice a year, every six months, and we can help with about $100. We never get, well, I shouldn't say never, we rarely get a person coming in with a utility bill that's under $100. Most of them are $200 to $300, Connie's our administrative assistant. Sometimes we get bills coming in for over $1,000, and that just breaks our heart because there's nothing we can really do. So we can help out with a utility bill basically twice a year. And we can help with food packages every other month because we have been in partnership with Salvation Army, that on the months when folks can't come to us, they could go to Salvation Army. Now, last fall, when Salvation Army was not handing food out as much, we picked up that spot and we allowed folks to come for four months in a row until they got back up and going again. So we do have safeguards in place. Sometimes life is interesting at Crosslines when people are desperate and they come in and we had just helped them the month before. Things can get kind of tense, but that's only a reflection of how people are desperate in these times. We're glad we're there, and we appreciate what you do for us.
Thank you very much for your lovely presentation.
I'd like to introduce you to Connie Cutright, who's our financial assistant, and many of you know Marilyn Walton, who is Connie's financial assistant. They work together. We have Ken Harvey, who is general maintenance around the parish house, and Roy Miff, who is the Director of our summer housing repair program, and they're just here to give us moral support. Yes. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Give me a few more minutes to depart. Items for discussion, action, or approval. We have a request for use of the practice fields by the candidate youth football indicating a letter from Mr. James Darvin, excuse me, that they are requesting use of the practice fields on Rushing Fork for the 2014 football year. And they will leave the fields between July 21 of this year through November 21. During this time, they will be using the fields nightly from 5:00 p.m. until dark and possibly on some weekends, with games normally occurring on Saturday or Sunday. So the fields are used there, but only be occasionally. Registration for that football is between May and June, and they will be submitting the players to insurance company liability forms we require before the first practice begins. So I motion to approve the request of use of the practice fields.
Is this the group that used the last year?
Yes.
Okay, well, I would lose if we approved your request.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye. Both hands sign. Motion approved.
Excuse me. May I speak on that?
You really ought to move the camera right up there by the podium and...
No, essentially, I'm not even on there. But as a park board member, I might ask that you reevaluate that consideration for that practice field until maybe next month. I know you made the motion a second, I tried to stop it before you did it, but I would ask that you refer that to the Upsher County Park Recreational Park Advisory Board for that consideration, because there are a couple of the issues that have come up, including the baseball usage of that field and softball usage coming up. Before you go ahead and approve that and make it so that that, and we have always, let me stress, that we've always approved letting the Little League of football go out there and use those fields. I think right now you have some time that maybe you could defer that to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board to also consider the other folks that are asking to use that facility or that property at the same time that you're considering right now. I do know the soccer is also looking at wanting to come out there and practice and Little League baseball. So before you commit the total use of that property to your football league, that you also take into consideration the other sports that are going to be asking to use that property at the same time. That's all I do. We have a meeting Monday.
Is it an issue of scheduling?
It will be at that point, yes, because that will be the high time of all of the sports getting together and starting to try to use that property out there. And we do not actually have any kind of a structure say on who and where they can use that property for certain sports. In other words, there's a high side and a low side of that property, and you don't want the football all the time down there at the low side, whereas baseball can be up in the high side. And we definitely don't want to have any kind of a issue as far as scheduling and who's going to be using that facility at the same time. That's all I would ask.
Possibly we could amend it to that we do give the approval, but that they must coordinate with Parks and Recreation in terms of the scheduling they requested. Would that be suitable?
Well, I think, well, I don't know if it would be in scheduling, but upon the recommendation of Parks and Recreation as far as, because we, well, actually, we haven't done any scheduling in that field. Maybe we're getting to that point where there isn't that much of a need, then we need to take the recommendation from the park board, and then we may have to look at scheduling that like we do our other facilities.
On the upside of that, I can say that the park board is now very active, and we have had a forum, which is an amazing thing lately, but I anticipate having another one and addressing the issues for the wellness complex. There's a lot of issues concerning that facility that we need to address now that the spring is coming up, summer's coming up, and there are issues as far, and I know football is already done over with insurance and the different rules and regulations that we ask that they take care of the facility out there and your trash cans, monitoring or policing their own usage. But we're also going to try to have some sort of a commitment on their part. We've had agreements in writing before with the football league, and I would assume we're going to do exactly with the baseball league. All I would do is ask that maybe you table this until your next meeting, because the park board would have met, and we would have some recommendations for you to address the situation with the football and baseball, and anybody else.
Do I have a motion to reconsider?
Well, I think what we can do is just, from what I understand, Rick, there doesn't seem to be a concern about us allowing them, it's just a matter of working the details out and...
Right.
...that type of thing. So I'd say we could notify them that after the park board meeting, which is this Monday?
Yes, sir.
This coming Monday, we see what the recommendations are, and if there are changes we need to make, or if there's regulations or specifications or rules or whatever that need to be followed, then they can be in conjunction with us. I mean, we want people to use the field, and that's something that we realized from the very beginning, the more groups want to use it, then the more we're going to have to be involved in scheduling and having rules and regulations and that type of thing. So I think let's see what the recommendations are from the park board.
I'm afraid if you go ahead and do this now at this point, that you're kind of endorsing the fact, or giving them the priority on the usage of the field. In other words, if they have five teams and they wanted to take up the whole wellness complex facility area to do so, then you would not have room for any soccer. and facility area to do so, then you would not have room for any soccer to go out there and practice or any baseball to go out there and practice. So I'm afraid that if you give them that, at this point, you give them priority to have those fields, which is pretty much in this, in your motion, which what you're doing. You're saying, okay, you can go out there if you've got those fields. They have priority over any other sport that may want to go out there and use it at that time. So I would, that's why I was, I would ask that you, we said in that motion and table it until perhaps the next meeting, then the board may be able to give you a little more clarification on how perhaps that could be handled. We have no objection, of course, to having the football out there. In fact, they're one of the only sports organizations that have actually used and utilized that facility. The problem is that as we have more sports and organizations needing space, I think for you to give the priority to football before any other organization, that's what my concern would be on that.
Well, now, I understand too that, you know, when we, when we laid that field out, we laid it out as a multipurpose field so that there was areas for football and areas for baseball or softball, so there was a multi and soccer. Now, I know there may be areas that are wet or there may be issues with, with being able to do that, but that, that may be, did we have any other group last year that?
Not that I'm aware of. I was only aware of football.
We had soccer came out and used it. I know that some of the men's softball came out and just roughly defined the area and tried to get some sort of specs on how they're going to run their fields. But I do know soccer was out there. I do know that there was a couple of actually remote control enthusiasts with airplanes and with cars out there. So it's getting utilized. It's not organized yet, but as far as any organized sports go, football was the main priority out there last year and we did approve it. There's no issue with that. We're just trying to make sure that if we're going to let baseball and soccer go out there, that there is some sort of a structure as to how that's going to be handled.
And that, and that may be more specified areas for them to play in.
Exactly. That would be my concern, especially with the summer months, the spring months coming up and the field perhaps being not entirely used or can be used in certain areas that all of a sudden you've got everybody in a corner trying to use the same amount of field for two sports.
Why don't we carry this according to Robert's rules?
Well, I mean, it, it doesn't seem to be a matter that us approve it. It's a matter of us getting the recommendation from the park board as far as how we're going to work with other groups on that, although we've not had any other requests.
Yes, you have.
Did we have any requests last year?
We have not received any requests.
From the baseball league? Then weren't they here last week?
They asked for funding.
Yeah, they just asked for funding. They didn't.
I have not received any other requests from them.
Ah, okay. I received an email on the baseball. Of course, that's got to go through the park board and that'll be Monday. But, and soccer's also having a concern with, they're having extra, an extremely high rate. More folks, more kids involved in the youth soccer program this year too. And they've asked, I've gotten an email wondering if they could have some usage out there at the field for practices. So it's that time of the year. This is the time of year, of course, where everybody's geared up for the spring and summer sports. So before you make any decisions on.
Well, to ensure better communication, possibly if you receive emails that you don't reflect a copy to make in order to the commissioners, you can forward a copy so that she's aware, at least, of the interest and that we have an idea of what organizations are interested in.
And they just came to me because they know that. And of course, I can't bring anything up until the board. And I have an agenda set for this coming meeting that I'll be sending to Megan actually this afternoon. But I just wanted you to be aware that there are other organizations that'll be asking and we don't want to have any kind of a conflict out there as far as usage in time for scheduling with that facility. That's all I would ask.
Well, I think we could, I think we could just, we've approved it with, I don't think Rick's objected to that. So if we could just hold off on, until we get a recommendation from the park board and say we need to tweak it as far as.
Timing available.
Because I think we all would like to see everybody that wants to use that field out there have the opportunity to. And we certainly just don't want to single without the football.
No, in fact, we would like to be enthusiastic to say that any organization or nonprofit that wants to go out there and put on any kind of a fundraiser or any kind of event, we would encourage that, in fact, to go out there and do it because you've got a wide open space and you've got a lot of area to play with. As long as it's not in conflict with football or soccer or whatever, please, we encourage any organization to use that wide open space.
Right, as long as they have the line building.
Right, and they need to coordinate with the county commission for that building.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Is, there is dirt left over from the armory construction, is there not? You just said something about the low end on the fields. There is some drainage concerned. Could that not be used on the fields? Bring it up or has FEMA stepped in there and allow it to?
Well, you're dealing with floodplain issues there as well. So we'd have to probably check with Terry Joe, I would think, to see what. It's not a simple thing of moving the dirt from one place to another.
Do we know for sure that they're not going to utilize all their dirt that they?
I don't know. I understand it was a possibility and it's not far away.
Right. Well, and it's like, it's like Mr. Bennett said last week, and, and we were aware of that. I mean, we tried to, we tried to do as much as we could out there to make it as usable as possible. We spent, still spent $30,000, $40,000 in what we did to make it as usable as it is now. But knowing that in order to make that, those fields totally usable, you're going to have to raise it two or three feet. I mean, we're aware of that. But that's, you know, the greatest possibility is something close like that that would be possible. But we would have to go through the permit system again and all that. But it would be worth checking with them to see if they are going to have extra dirt. I mean, that would certainly be something that would be worth checking into.
I'm sure there's some people around that would, wouldn't charge anything for.
Well, regarding the self, it's been.
That wasn't the case in the past. I mean, you might be able to get the armory out there ago. We're going to have to move it anyhow. We'll move it over. You might be able to get them to level it out. And they said it needed to be raised three foot according to make a baseball field there, which would be suitable. And there is some things that we may get some free assistance. But normally when we check, somebody wants to charge.
I mean, I, I can understand that, but there's still people out there that better their name by doing public projects like that too.
Well, and that, that's very true. And there, there have been a lot of businesses that have donated a lot in this county and other counties. I think part of the problem is now that a lot of your companies that are involved in oil gas business, either the work they're doing in this area down and a lot of the equipment where they are working that is out of the area. And so with the, with the reduced amount of money they have where they can give back to the community, plus the fact that what the most equipment they are using is Pennsylvania or out of this area that's. But, you know, it's always, it's always good to check and ask. I mean, but, you know, businesses, a lot of times, small businesses are saddled with, with a lot of requests for donations that, you know, we have to be able to do.
We, and we, in all actuality, we did have some volunteers come out. The last time, we did a lot of work out on that complex, come out and pre-unload some dirt out there. That's how it got raised up to the point it was. It got leveled out. We had, actually, one of our board members is a member of the National Guard, and they utilized some of their equipment to come out to help out on that facility. One of, one of the things that we were anticipating or hopeful of is that creek in the back with the new armory being built, that they would address that drainage because they would have to address that, particularly if they're going to be expanding back there. And we were kind of hoping that that would benefit the wellness complex in some way as far as the drainage of that water and make it a lot less expensive for us to have to deal with in the future. But not just raising it. If you're going to have a real baseball field that, that we anticipated with the Babe Ruth Field, you've got to take into account other drainage that goes underneath those layers that you're building to make sure that that drainage is there for years or decades to come. And, and there have been a lot of donations or a lot of concern or a lot of, how do I say, attention brought out to that wellness complex. Now, I think though, in my opinion, that it's going to take not just the county commission that it's, it's shoulder to load so far. It's going to be a community effort between the city, the county, because you've got to keep in mind, a lot of these kids that are using these or in those sports, particularly like Little League, city residents. So how come the city is not actually contributing or participating a little bit more in the actions or the needs of the recreational areas that are needed now and that you're becoming aware of? So I think it's a community-wide effort. If we really want to do this with recreation, it's going to be a total community-wide addressing of that to make it happen. And I know the county's always stepped up first, so I appreciate that.
Any further discussion? Okay, next we'll go with a letter regarding resignation of Brenda S. Q., the James W. Curry Library, effective March 12. In her letter, Brenda advises that the 14 years I have served as librarian at James Curry Library have been wonderful. I've been really working with the county and I've met so many wonderful people throughout the years here at the library and park, many of whom I have never forgotten. I will never forget. Excuse me. I've enriched league, blessed by those I've served with here at the library and park and also within the county system. If my help is needed during the transition, please let me know. I would be glad to assist. Here's a motion to accept Brenda's resignation.
Second.
Second it?
Second, and she has done an outstanding job.
Yes, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. All in favor, say aye. Okay, motion carried. Next, we have resignation of Mavis Shipwood. Actually, Mavis is residing, retiring, excuse me, from 4H Ogrio. She serves as a 4H assist who effective March 28. And in her letter, she talks about many of the wonderful opportunities that she's had to serve at 4H and the beneficial programs that 4H has to, adds to the community and to the youth of Ogrio as well as the CEOss. And that she's retiring for the main purpose that many of us individuals in approach her time of age, who has to spend time with the grandchildren. So that's a well-deserved effort on her part. We appreciate her past service. She's been a mainstay down there for a good number of years. And I do know that she will be missing.
Right, she's done a good job.
Exactly.
I would move that we approve her retirement resignation request.
Second?
I will second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Motion carries. We assure her the best of health, spend some time with her grandchildren. Next, we have the approval of Lewis County Animal, excuse me, Lewis Upsher Animal Control Facility volunteers, Desiree Poling and Harley Squires. They filled out the appropriate papers and everything's been approved. Is there a motion to approve those volunteers, Desiree Poling and Harley Squires, to work at the Lewis Upsher Animal Control Facility?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Motion carries. Okay, going down for information, we have the building permit report for February 2014. Indicates that we've had roughly a little over halfway of $562,000 in projected costs for home improvements and/or expansions, redevelopment, reconstruction. Next, we have a Region 7 Planning and Development Council Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy Priority List Report Update, which is something we've had on the agenda for several weeks now, a listing of projects that were requested to recommend a project or projects by certifying certain points for those projects, setting forth a priority. And by approving a priority list, that will be due by Region 7 Planning and Development Council for their support as well. Do I have a motion to identify projects that we would want to promote as priorities for the Upshur County area?
Well, I, I have a recommendation and I could, I could make that a form of a motion that since the Adrian PSD's, the water list of the project on here has been, even though they didn't, they didn't receive as much grant money as they hoped they did, step up the plate and are going to be borrowing a considerable amount of money. So that would take, they were our, been our top priority for quite a few years.
Right.
And that takes them off. That's, that's a check mark with them that that's, that the project's moved along. And we have promised this year, Elkins Road, that once Adrian PSD was funded, that we would make them the number one priority. And I think we should, we should all do that promise, which would then, we would give them the 25 points, which you can only give one project 25 points. That makes it your number one project. And then, then you have 105 points total. And I would recommend that we give Elkins Road the 25 points and then the 20 points left over then go to the Elmore Broadband Deployment, which is a little less than $100,000. And then that would balance out the point system. And the other projects are good.
They're still stable.
They're still stable. So that would be, that would be my motion to.
Do we, do we know where that Phase 3 water extension will be in the Elkins District?
Yeah, they've gone over that a number of times. It's, I'm not sure how many customers that, that will add, a certain number and then there's certain upgrades to the system, so.
Improves of fire, hydrants.
Right, there'll be hydrants, there'll be, I'll leave backup generators and there's several different support things in conjunction with added new customers. So that would be my motion.
Okay, so there's a motion pending for the Elkins Road Public Service District Phase 3 Water Extension to be awarded 25 points on the priority list and that the Elmore Broadband Deployment be awarded 20 points.
And the rest of them then would say the same.
Right. So do I have a, well, there is a motion. Do I have a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Motion carries. Thank you. That was due, I think, by March 15th, or March 14th, the Ides of March. Opposed to it. Okay, next we have the Cannon Upsher, Upsher and Cannon Health Department Proposed Revisions to Upshur County and Door Repair Regulations. And we have been provided a copy of the proposed regulations, which were adopted for approval February 18th at a meeting of the Cannon Board of Health. They're submitting these to us for a 30-day comment period of the proposed changes contained therein. And that all comments must be postmarked by March 30, 2014 in order to be considered by the Board of Health. We then have agendas, notice of meetings, and of course, we have our responsibilities to pay the bills and take care of expenses and whatnot. Is there any further business pending before the commission?
No, we have bills to pay and, and just taking a look at our budget.
Next week will be, well, the budget matters all week.